Okay.
Well, Dr. Smith, Chancellor Head, members of the board, it's my pleasure to represent the presidents tonight for our monthly board report. This does make presentation number seven in about four days. So, but it's perfect segue on the heels of what you just heard Dr. Head explain. Lone Star College Tomball and all of the other colleges as well are very committed to changing the world and making it a better place. And we recognize that too much has been given, there is a great responsibility to give back. And you can tell by the presentations from AACC, the kind of giving back we're doing at a national level. We also give back all the time throughout the year. And what I want to share with you tonight are some ways that Lone Star College is trying to not only impact the success of our students, but the success of students all over the country by sharing our information, our practices, and just what we do. So, a few examples and highlights of how we do that. So, Lone Star College Sci Fair this last March held their second annual math symposium. As you can see, they brought together instructors, tutors, different folks, over 100 people from these colleges to collaborate on best practices in math. From Lone Star College, University of Houston, San Jacinto, Georgia Perimeter, and Sci Fair ISD. Here's some pictures from that event. You can tell it was very well attended and a very collaborative session on how best to engage students in math. Lone Star College Kingwood had its History Day Conference, and the purposes there are also to bring together K-12 educators in the college for the purpose of professional development, to share resources, to examine history and the necessary instructional tools they can use to teach their students in June 2018 at the Holocaust Museum.
Before you go any further, is that Craig Livingston?
It is.
On the right, okay.
Lone Star College Montgomery has earned quite a national reputation as being a leader in predictive analytics. They did an AACC conference presentation on that. They've also made their expertise available to those of us throughout the college. And so, last October Rebecca was telling me almost 200 people from throughout Lone Star College attended their data camp to learn how they are using predictive analytics to improve enrollment, persistence, retention, and graduation. When they have their next one in 2018, that will also be opened to other colleges as well, outside of Lone Star. North Harris offered a Partners in Education event, an Educational Partnership Expo last March. Again, they brought in counselors, teachers, principals, administrators from both public and private schools in their service area to talk about all of our services and pathways for students from transfer, financial aid, workforce education, and the Honors College as well. Lone Star College Tomball is about to offer its third annual Grit Summit. We started this in 2015. We've had people from around the system present their stories. We've talked a lot about stories tonight. Dr. Alden Smith was one of our presenters last year, Mario, several folks from throughout Lone Star have shared their own grit stories, how they overcame adversity. And our purpose with this summit is to highlight ways that we can develop the resilience, instinct, tenacity, and growth mindset in students around the country. Save the date for Friday, October 12th. I'm very excited about this year's keynote speaker. These two students, Ertan and Alex Little, were recently featured on Ellen. They were raised by a single mother, Maureen Little, on the verge of homelessness. They actually live in the area, and they both were accepted with full scholarships to Ivy League schools. And Maureen, the mom, is our keynote speaker in October. So, we're very excited to have her share her story about how she instilled this kind of mindset in her sons. Lone Star College University Park had their second annual Texas Open Innovation Conference, where they partnered, as you can see here, not with just educators, but with also employers in the area. You can Noble Energy, Oral Roberts University, Harris County, CEO Willbrook Hospital, Methodist Hospital, all of those, even NASA Exomobile you can see here, to talk about how to innovate, how to partner between education and the business community. There's some great pictures from that event, also very collaborative and well-attended, very much a way to give back, not just to our community, but to our employers as well. But the colleges aren't the only ones doing this. I wanted to just highlight a couple of the conferences that are offered by our system office. They are also very committed to sharing with other colleges around the country. For instance, the Globalization Higher Ed Conference that was just in April, Grant Summit is a popular conference to help learn how to attain more grants. And the Faculty Symposium actually featured some of our faculty from around the system. So, Lone Star College has a lot to give back. It's a pleasure and an honor to work for a place that takes to recognize this, to whom much has been given, there is a great responsibility. And with that, I will answer any questions you might have.
I have one question, just a curiosity. Back on the Sci Fair slide, you mentioned, or you mentioned House Bill 22, 23. And I was just wondering what that was. If not, I'll just look it up tonight.
Kim is the expert on this. She did her dissertation on it.
Wait, I'm just about to...
Yeah, Kim's about to do it.
Okay, I'm sorry, alright.
And she'll say it much more eloquently than I will.
Well, okay, appreciate it.
Alright, any other questions?
The, all the services that were talked about at North Harris that's available, is it on the website somewhere where we can find that?
I don't know.
Yeah, I get a lot of questions from that when you're at a church and there's 12,000 people.
Okay, very good.
Good job.
Thank you very much. I'll try to get that to the end for you.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Ellen, you're up next.
More than 600 guests attended.
Chair Smith, trustees, and Chancellor Head, as you know, Lone Star College is very lucky to have a very active and committed Board of Directors for the Lone Star College Foundation. And their mission is to raise money for scholarships and programs for the college. And their premier event each year is Star Gala, was held April 14th at the Waterway Marriott. Many of you were there. Those of you who were there know that it was a terrific event. And I've asked Nicole Robinson-Gautier, who's our Executive Director of the Foundation, to come up and give you a report on Star Gala 2018.
Good evening. Well, I'll just let the video speak for itself because the majority of my report will be right here. More than 600 guests attended the Lone Star College Foundation's Star Gala 2018 around the world in 80 days to celebrate and support student success. A highlight of the evening was when Lone Star College Promised Scholarship recipient Rachel Perez was presented with a scholarship to attend the University of Houston downtown to continue her studies. Many students start close at Lone Star College and finish UHD strong thanks to numerous programs that have been specifically aligned to transfer seamlessly between the two institutions. Perez, who is majoring in biology with the goal of becoming a pediatrician or an emergency room physician, expressed her gratitude, thanking the attendees for taking the time to help her reach her goals. Another important role the Lone Star College Foundation plays is helping fund the LSC Promise Scholarship. This scholarship is designed to reduce financial barriers to college and provide students with the means to fund the balance of tuition and mandatory fees. Star Gala 2018 also featured many sought-after silent and live auction items, including golf with the chancellor, which raised more than $27,000. Many lives were changed for the better during Star Gala 2018, thanks to the support of all of the generous LSC Foundation donors and sponsors. In all, more than $490,000 was raised. Your support truly helps students start close and go far.
That would be a perfect little capsule, but definitely the highlight of our evening was University of Houston downtown surprising our Sci Fair graduate, who was a scholarship, promiscuous scholarship recipient with a full scholarship to continue her education. And we were wonderful that Sheila Jackson Lee, our Congresswoman, joined us for the event and gave a speech and honored us with her presence. So, lots of great things happening at the foundation, and so, thank you for your support. Just wanted to make sure that you had some information on what we're up to. Did you want me to give a little bit on the flood report you mentioned?
Sure.
I put you on the spot, my apologies. But one of the things that has come up recently is we've given out a great deal of funding in Hurricane Harvey relief. And there was another round of funding that came through this spring that I wanted to make sure you were aware of. Our anonymous donor that gave in the fall came back with another half a million-plus gift. And the gift was given to students who had not received any funding since the fall. So, there was that initial round, and then students had received some funding here and there. But on the six-month anniversary, they came back to me and said, "We want to do it again." They're very quiet about it. It's just the best kind. So, over the course of the year, we've been able to fund almost $1.8 million in funding for Hurricane Harvey relief, and it was 2,061 students and 560 employees.
1.8 from the foundation, does that include the money that the city gave us also?
Yes, sir. There was money from the city of Houston, there was money from TACC, Hearthstone, the anonymous donor, and we have monies that came in from community colleges all across the country, local donors, and then what Lone Star College and the chancellor has had put together to help the employees.
When we talked, I just, I don't know any of the colleges that put up $1.8 million to help students. Most of it's from the anonymous donor, but we put up quite a bit ourselves, and the community did, so.
Thank you.
Great job.
Good reporting, thank you. Kim, now you have a chance to tell me about House Bill 22, 23.
Okay. Hello, trustees?
Hello there.
Chairman Smith, Chancellor Head. All right. Developmental education update. Wendy Wilson, who is the Executive Director of Developmental Ed and Curriculum Management, helped you with this. This is her wheelhouse. So, we're going to talk about national trends in developmental education first. So, developmental education refers to those students who come to us testing below college-ready in reading, writing, and mathematics. It used to be called remedial education. We don't call it that anymore. We think of it more as developmentally moving students along the continuum. This study right here kicked off quite a stir nationally. This was one of several studies done by Bailey, Thomas Bailey, and other researchers. And what it showed, they looked at 141,000 math students and found that if those students have to begin their college work three levels below college-ready, so if they have to slog their way through three or more developmental math courses, they are only 17% likely to graduate or complete. If they start three levels below in reading, they are only 29% likely to graduate. So, developmental students start out with a long way to go before they can even get to their college courses. And this seems to be a barrier for them. Just under one-third of students referred to developmental courses never actually been registered for courses, which caused Bailey and other researchers to conclude that just being, just being put in developmental education was a barrier to onboarding right away. They didn't even start. The other issue is they found that students who tested just below college readiness, we call them bubble students, they're on the bubble of being college-ready. If you put those students straight into credit-level courses, they tend to do just as well as the students who tested into credit-level courses. So, these studies caused a huge shift in developmental education. So, if you take 100 students and you assume that we have a 75% pass rate in all developmental courses, then 56 students would go to the second level, and 42 students would end up in credit courses or would complete credit courses. So, you're talking about 42 students out of 100 students. If you're assuming 75% pass rate at all levels, and that would be a pretty good pass rate, that would be a very good success rate. At Lone Star, we have a 24% success rate in math. Students who start at the lowest level of developmental ed and continue all the way through, 57% in reading, 53% in writing. So, House Bill 22, 23. That caused a big stir last year. It passed June 15th, 2017, and the coordinating board is now requiring that by this fall, fall 2018, 25% of students in our developmental courses must be put in credit-level courses with co-requisite remediation support. 50% by fall 19, and 75% in fall 2020. So, 75% of our students who test into developmental education in fall 2020 must be put into credit courses with an additional support course. So, development, what is a developmental co-requisite? So, it's a class that the students take at the same time that they take credit level. So, for example, if you test into developmental English, you would take English 1301 with a 0119 or a 0219 support course in the same semester, at the same time. The purpose is to help you get through your English course. The same thing with math. Not all students who test into developmental ed are required to take this. Students who have a TSI exemption or waiver, veterans, for example, are not required to register for developmental courses. Students who score below the floor of developmental education, we're handling those students through continuing education. Students without a college math in their program, for example, a Level 2 certificate, do not have to register for co-requisite courses. What's important to understand is that these students have to take a developmental course in the same semester, generally at the same time that they take the credit-level course. And the developmental course could come before, but it's in the same semester that they're taking the credit-level course. So, I'm going to show you numbers in a minute. Just remember, 25 by this fall, 50 next fall, 75% the following fall. Okay, so here are our fall 2017 numbers. We had 4,279 students taking developmental English last fall. We had 2,386 students taking ESOL. Now, you've heard from Rebecca Royer, she spoke a couple of months ago, and she's right about one thing. ESOL students are really not developmental students. We sort of have a problem with this mandate from the state. Because many of our ESOL students have degrees in their home countries, they're not developmental students. They simply have to acquire English skills, but they're very different from developmental students. But the state has decreed that they are going to be counted in our developmental numbers for the purposes of this 25, 50, and 75%. So, we're working on that. Math is by far our largest developmental population, 10,579 students last fall. So, the grand total is 17,244. The total eligible for co-requisite is 7,176. So, here, Lone Star has said, "Okay, 25% is what is mandated by the state, but if we set our target at 35%, then we definitely won't fall below our numbers for the state." So, we've set a 35% target for ourselves. That means in English, we have to create courses for students for fall for 1,300 students. That's a lot. We have been working very hard on this all year, and 1,200 students for math. I want to take a minute to congratulate Wendy Wilson, who came on sometime last year, a year and a half ago, I don't remember when exactly, but she has worked wonders. She has gotten six colleges to agree on how we are going to do this for English and math. That in itself is a miracle, and she deserves a lot of credit for that. And she's a wonderful person to work with. Alright, so, math, we have four math classes that we are building coreqs for. I did not know all the numbers. I'm the English person, I know English really well, so I had to put a cheat sheet on the presentation just so that I knew what these math courses were. So, we've got college algebra is a 48-hour course, and we're adding a 48-hour coreq to it. So, students will be in six hours of math a week. Business math, same thing, 48, 48. Math for liberal arts, we're going to coreq that with a 32-hour course, so they will have four hour, it was about two hours a week. And, no, four hours a week, and statistics, same thing. And so, we have different co-requisits for the different gateway courses, the different gateway maths. For English, it's very interesting what we decided to do for English. At least, it's interesting for me. I don't know how you're going to feel about it. 0119 is once a week, and it's for students who test below college-ready in either reading or writing, once a week. 0219 for students who tested below college-ready in both reading and writing, and it's twice a week. So, you can see how we worked that out. So, the most common and most well-known model for co-requisite remediation courses is the ALT model, designed by Community College of Baltimore County. And they are an Achieving the Dream school, they presented this often at Achieving the Dream. And years and years and years ago, Kathy Cecil Sanchez went to an Achieving the Dream conference and brought this model back to Tomball, and we implemented it. It's been at least eight years, I think. And the way it works is you have, what you build in English 1301, that is capped at 25 students. 15 of the students in the course are regular 1301 students. They either came up through developmental ed, or they tested directly into English 1301. And 10 of those students are actually developmental students. So, you're mainstreaming your developmental students into 1301 with your regular 1301 students. Those 10 students are co-enrolled in English 0119 or 0219. They generally meet with the same professor directly after class for an additional 50 minutes of workshop time and one-on-one help with their professor. And so, that way, they have the same, the professor is working with them on the assignments for the 1301 class. And we've done this for a number of years, and it works very well. The ALT model can utilize the same instructors for both the 1301 or the co-requisite class, or you can use, you can team teach. You can have a developmental professor teaching the co-requisite developmental course and a credit instructor teaching the 1301. There are some alternative models. English 1301 paired with 0119 for 30 minutes per day. The students are not mainstreamed, it's a cohort model. For the students, it feels like a 64-hour English 1301. You can build 0119 and 0219 courses that are standalone, taught by different instructors. The students simply choose an English 1301, and then they choose a co-requisite course. And this is, we're working on approving the third one, and we're going to work on this, we're going to do this with ESOL students, and I'm very excited about it. For students who test, who need help in reading, you can pair a developmental course with history, government, psychology, sociology, something really cool and interesting. And the developmental professor works with them on their reading assignments in those, the reading-intensive course. So, you've got some really cross-disciplinary work going on there, you get faculty working together. Math co-requisite configurations are built, I mean, you have all those options with math as well. And this is a screenshot straight from my dissertation. I interviewed 16 co-requisite students for my dissertation research, and you can see that they were quite varied. Six different races or ethnicities reflected. I had a good mix of males and females. The age range is 18 to 36. You can see that, you know, about half of them worked, half of them did not. About half were first generation, and the other half were not. And it was, it was really interesting talking with them. I did interviews with all of them. So, the path to co-requisite English took me by surprise. When I started my research, I did not realize how many ways there were into it. So, what we found out, we had originally built the courses for students who tested just below college-ready, just below, you know, they were bubble students. What we found out, though, is that students who tested into the lowest levels of developmental ed were being referred into these co-requisite courses by professors who taught them the Level 1 reading and Level 1 writing. And said, "You got this, you can do this. You should skip English 0309 and go into 1301 with support. You're going to do great." And what was interesting was for the students who were referred into these courses, they said, several of them said, "I didn't believe in myself. I didn't know I was good at this until my professor told me I was good at this and that I should skip English 0309." It was very interesting, the connection with their professor, the feedback from the professor, the faith that their professor had in them to do really well in a credit-level course, even though the test told them that they weren't ready for that, it meant all the difference in the world. Six of them were referred by their advisors, and they were very grateful for the opportunity. Two of them argued their way into a coreq class. And what was interesting is one of those was Seraphina. She was a, she had gotten into A&amp;M, she'd just graduated from high school, gotten into A&amp;M, went to A&amp;M, went to an orientation, didn't really like what she heard, decided to go to Lone Star. She wasn't as interested in the program they were offering her. She had been an AP student in high school, had a lot of confidence about her ability, in her ability. She had retaken the TSIA three times, did not test into college-ready, went to the advisor, found out about co-requisits, and said, "I'm taking this, and you're not going to stop me." The advisor said, "Okay." She made an A. She then got into honors. She made an A in her honors English 1302. She has since graduated, and she is now, I believe, at the University of Houston. Opal, non-traditional student, three children. She was referred into co-requisite remediation by her English 0304, 0306 faculty members. She's one of the ones who said, "She, when my professor said she believed in me, I realized I needed to as well." And she went into coreq and did very, very well. Tony took me by surprise. Tony was one of the first students I interviewed. I didn't, hadn't written my IRB for Tony. Tony had tested into English 1301, failed it, and decided to take English 1301 with a coreq, even though he didn't need to, because he knew he, or he believed he needed the extra help. And he said it made all the difference in the world in his success. And so, I hear this line a lot in pathways, that students don't do optional. Actually, the first two students I interviewed for my study both did optional. They were both registered for co-requisite classes even though they didn't need to. They had tested into English 1301, but they felt that they needed extra help. And tweet, I interviewed actually three or four, three students who had immigrated from Vietnam and were struggling with English acquisition. And they were doing very well in English in the co-requisite classes and were getting that extra help. And so, my pool was very diverse. The outcomes for the students in my study, all of them passed English 1301 with 0119. Eleven of them, 11 of the 16 enrolled in and passed 1302. Of those 11, three have graduated, and several are still enrolled. Several indicated transfer plans in their interviews, so I'm pretty confident that they transferred. Of the five students who have not passed English 1302, two are still enrolled often on, and three of the five have disappeared. So, I think that, I know that my 16 students probably aren't indicative of national trends necessarily, but they were pretty successful. And these are students who would have possibly languished in developmental ed for several semesters. So, it cannot be emphasized how much money co-requisite saves them. They don't have to take it, you know, they're only taking a one or two credit class as opposed to several classes over several semesters. Okay, and this is my last slide. This has nothing to do with co-requisite remediation, but I wanted to ask, does anybody know what this refers to? Anybody in the room at all? What? That's right.
What did you say?
Yes.
What did you say?
Yes, Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy, this is the title of the fourth book in Douglas Adams' three book, or four book trilogy. Douglas Adams can't count. And what it is, it's the dolphins saying goodbye and thanking human beings for all the fish they have eaten. And so like the dolphins, I would like to thank you for four years of being Faculty Senate President. I came on as Faculty Senate President when several of you were just elected board members, so I feel like we kinda made this journey together. But you made me feel very welcome, I have learned a lot, I appreciate your mentorship. And, uh, it has been a blast.
I do have a question though, you mentioned Baltimore County Community College. And they had a, uh, corex model, I mean, correct model.
Yes.
Do you have any data on how successful?
Very, very, that's why the corex model has spread. And in fact, with House Bill twenty-two, twenty-three, corex are mandated. In the state now, so we're, um, we, we have to put students in corex. And the OUT model designed by Baltimore County is considered the, sort of the, um, flagship model, you know, it's the, the foundation model. So it, they, students do very well.
So our graduation rate should, should
Yeah.
increase substantially as a result of the data.
Yes.
Plays out here.
We're hoping so, what we're hoping is that developmental students won't stop out, drop out, they will be propelled forward. That combined with our pathways work and all that should, should help, should increase our completion rates, our success rates.
Excellent, thank you.
Alicia, you worked at Baltimore County, right?
I did actually require to keep the development model, so the dumb, you could break down the grades, they're eighty-nine percent, so they couldn't improve to eighty-nine ninety percent.
Thank you.
Good job.
Kim, and the meaning of life is forty-two.
Yes.
Okay, board members, you've heard reports from the, from the administration. Now it's time for you to tell us about schools that you've visited over the last month, other things that you have done that's worthy of being mentioned, and I'll start with Ms. Good.
Thank you, I had the pleasure of attending the fifteenth International Ed Conference, um, on April twentieth here, um, at the system office, it was very informative. It was also very exciting to see everything that we are doing as a system to foster, um, international education as a two-way opportunity, both getting students out into the world and bringing the world to the students. So I encourage you to attend next year.
Great, I will, thank you. Hey, Kyle. Miriam, I, I'm gonna go last. Okay, Ken? Go ahead.
I have two very brief and worthless announcements. This is gonna be very short.
Oh, no, no problem, no one, go ahead. You have the floor.
There is in Homer's Odyssey, a mean beast with one eye called Cyclops. This eye does not work. I'm gonna go in, in a week and try to have it fixed to see if I can get it up and running. In the meantime, I shall be addressed here tonight, not as trustee Trobridge, but as trustee Cyclops.
That's what I'm just saying. Okay.
I, I'm almost done.
Oh, I thought you were through, okay, go ahead.
My second worthless announcement is, I have decided to move to California. I have put my house up for sale. I intend to become a California flower child. That's it.
Okay, appreciate it. Uh, I have a few things I wanna, wanna mention, and the list is kinda medium long. Uh, on April nineteenth, I had the opportunity to attend the Rising Star Banquet that was held at the Higher Regency North. And I was invited by a North Harris student. I found it real interesting and it's stuff that I like anyway, it was recognizing, I think, students that had, that have gone over and beyond and that were nominated by their peers. Uh, on April the twenty-seventh, I attended the National Association of Collegiate Scholars at Montgomery. And I was, was the guest speaker, you know, at that particular event. I had never heard of this organization, but I was really, really enthused at the number of students that were inducted that night that had a perfect grade point average. And one of them was a student that had a sight disability, you know, which shows that all of our students can achieve. And we make accommodations for those that have situations that may be different from others. Um, I had, along with Quentin and several other folks, I had a chance to attend a follow-up meeting with the Mayor's Committee on Complete Communities. And what they were basically looking for are things that Lone Star can do to help underprivileged communities become self-sufficient, as I, as I put it. Uh, Dr. Ted already mentioned the science and innovation, uh, activity, that was a, a very well-organized and, and a very, uh, worthwhile meeting that I enjoyed, enjoyed attending. Um, I also went to Victory Center on April the seventeenth for their open house and had a chance to see folks from the community coming in and getting an eyeful of stuff that they can get, you know, from Lone Star right in the community. The last thing I wanna mention, it's gonna happen tomorrow, and I mention this primarily to board members, but it impacts others also. But the, the ACCT, and you may know this already, is having a webinar tomorrow at two PM. And the webinar deals with the reauth, reauthorization of the Higher Education Act. And it's, it's called Prosper. And the purpose of the, of the, of the webinar is to make sure everyone is up to speed on what, what has been proposed under Prosper. And all you have to do is register for the webinar and then they'll make sure that you have, have access to that particular data. So I encourage, as many of you that can, listen to that webinar and provide input to your elected officials on stuff that you agree or disagree with, but it's your opportunity to be heard. Oh, I was gonna put that way, okay. Thirdly, and lastly, I know this is long. I am attending a CCATT, which stands for Community College Association of Texas Trustees. I will be attending a session on January the first and the second. And June, June first, well, I said January, good God almighty, okay. June first and second, thank you, that's a long time to wait. And our, during this meeting, there's gonna be an election, uh, of our offices that are open. And the offices that are open is our chair-elect, secretary, and four at-large positions. And I have been asked to become a candidate for one of the at-large positions. And I are, I gladly accepted the opportunity. So I'll try to bring the victory home. There are six folks that have applied for the four positions. And I, I feel pretty confident that I get one of them, and I appreciate your support in that. And with that, that's all I have in that particular category. Any, anybody else have anything else? If not, Helen, do we have any citizens wishing to speak to us tonight? Three, okay.
How are y'all?
Hi, Dave.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Now, I was just, uh, just wanted some clarification on some of the free speech zones on campus. Uh, I know in the policy manual it says that they are designated areas on each facility, but there seems not to be a way to find out where exactly they are in any policy that I've been able to find. So it's, that's just clarification.
Okay, and, yeah.
Yeah, I just want a clarification on the rules.
Good.
The rules on what we're allowed to do and not do within the session, in terms of
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, cool, yeah.
If we can just reiterate those.
Yeah, oh, yeah, well, yeah, one of the things you might not know, what he was saying, basically, when citizens have the opportunity to, to comment to the board, it's not an agenda item and all of the items that we discuss have to be posted, you know, before the meeting. And one of the things that we will, will tell you is that your question, you know, we've heard it and we're gonna ask the chancellor and his staff to, to make sure that that's known, uh, to the, uh, to the students at large. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, so, so
We cannot discuss it tonight.
Right, okay.
But it will be, uh, addressed appropriately.
So if you'll make sure that, uh, Helen Clardy has your name and telephone number, we'll get back with you immediately over this. Okay, 'cause we're clear about this.
Yeah, just wanna be clear on each campus where they are and designated.
Right, yeah, yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the way, you know, that, that you had a question, you came to us and that's the way it should be, so appreciate it.
Thank you, we'll get, we'll get back to you immediately, okay?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am John Bergduff, representing the American Federation of Teachers. At the April Board of Trustees meeting, Faculty Senate President Dr. Anthony Carrera from Kingwood finished his speech to the board by affirming his support for taxes. Board member Dr. Kyle Scott followed up by asking him, and all of us really, what he believed was the correct balance between taxes and tuition in funding Lone Star College. This is a difficult philosophical question that has a very real impact on Lone Star students and district citizens. As everyone here to know, tonight knows, the three main pillars of community college funding in Texas are state allocations, local taxes, and student tuition. The state expects Texas public colleges and universities to increase the number of degrees granted by one point seven percent per year to reach a goal of five hundred and fifty thousand college degrees in twenty thirty. However, every session, the legislature cuts the percentage of higher education costs the state will cover. Unless there are dramatic changes in state leadership, that trend is going to continue. Therefore, unfortunately, the ever-increasing cost of educating more of our fellow Texans fall at the feet of our local taxpayers and our students to ever higher degrees. Dr. Carrera confessed that he did not know what the proper balance was between local taxes and tuition. We in the AFT don't know the answer to that question either. However, we have some thoughts to consider regarding one of those sources. According to the Texas Association of Community Colleges, Lone Star College's property tax rate of ten point seven two cents per a hundred dollars evaluation places us forty-fourth among the fifty reporting community college systems. For years, we have taken our low tax rate as something to boast about and we have systematically lowered that tax rate many times. Fiscal responsibility is obviously a great virtue, but over the years, that frugality has hurt us. For example, before Dr. Head became chancellor, Lone Star had fallen to second from the bottom among Texas community colleges on percentage of classes covered by full-time faculty. Fixing that one problem is very, very expensive and we're grateful that that process is underway. But now, facing the enormous fiscal damage from Hurricane Harvey and the drop in enrollment that has followed, we are faced with the prospect of cutting class sections for fall, even while we need to grow. Across the state, the average tax rate is about eighteen point zero six cents per a hundred dollar valuation. This is approximately what our neighbors at San Jacinto College levy. If Lone Star charged the state average tax rate, our property tax revenues would increase by, by over a hundred and twenty-three million dollars. What would the impact on a typical taxpayer be? For a house valued at two hundred thousand dollars, property taxes would increase by just over twelve dollars per month. In terms my freshman students could relate to better, that's three grande lattes per month at Starbucks. Is that too much to ask? What if we only raised the tax rate to the rollback rate? This is the rate above which citizens could petition for a tax rollback election. According to the Lone Star College website, that rate would be eleven point thirty-seven cents per a hundred dollar valuation. That increase would cost the homeowner described previously only about a dollar extra per month and would bring the college an extra eleven million dollars per year. This rate would still put us substantially below the rates levied by, by our friends in the Dallas, Alamo, Tarrant County, and El Paso community college systems. We live in a time when, for some political demographics, the reaction to any hint of a tax increase is a knee-jerk no. Yet, most of the citizens of our district recognize the incredible value Lone Star College brings to their families and their communities. We believe that they can be convinced that it would be worth a dollar a month, or maybe even a latte, or two, or three. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
I guess he's, he's not here, huh? Okay. Okay, th- thank you, Helen. Let's move to the, uh, to the consent agenda. We have, uh, we've heard item number two. Item eleven and item nineteen will be, uh, heard separately. Board members, are there any other consent items that you would like to have heard separately? If not, I would like to have a motion to adopt items one, three through ten, twelve through eighteen, and twelve through eighteen. And twenty, twenty-one, do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that we adopt those items, all those, any, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Item eleven. Jennifer, are you?
I asked Jennifer to explain number eleven and number nineteen. I, I wanted to be very clear and upfront about what we're, what we're asking for in both cases.
Yes, so on number eleven, what happened there is when the spring ISD lease was initially entered into, it was for thirty thousand dollars, which is below the hundred thousand dollar threshold of what needs to come to the board, so initially that lease was not brought to the board. There came a point this past February where it was realized that it needed to be renewed and quite frankly, it should have been brought to the board at that point in time because cumulative, the lease exceeded a hundred thousand dollars. The expiration date of end of February, this was realized early February when it was already past the board date, so and it, I did sign an administrative approval to renew that lease, so we are bringing this item today requesting ratification and recognizing that simply being late on getting this lease renewed is really not best practices.
So the, this is the Truck Driving Institute and what's the total amount of money?
Uh, there is in the sheet here, so the total, we are at, uh, it's been about sixty thousand a year, so the renewal, so the total here is two hundred and forty thousand cumulative.
So, we, we missed the sixty thousand, we went, we should've come back for a sixty thousand ratification because we went over the hundred thousand more, so.
So you've heard the explanation, can I have a motion on item number eleven, then a second?
Sure, babe.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, if we adopt item eleven, comments, questions? Just one comment, I really appreciate the, you know, us recognizing the error, bringing the error forward. And I like the transparency and even though the error was made, so thank you for bringing it back rather than, well, rather than not bringing it back, I almost worried that we don't want on the record. Okay, so any other comments? All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
So number nineteen, uh, deals with Kingwood and, um,
our goal is to open up Kingwood in January of nineteen, fully open January nineteen. And our total cost so far, the damages from the hurricane are about 40 million. But the longer we go with Kingwood not fully opened, it's really beginning to hit us in the pocketbook, so, uh, what we're asking for is some approval to move forward. That's out of the norm for what we would do, so that we can expedite Kingwood and, and get it opened in January. So, if you'll explain exactly what's going on there.
Yes, this is to help us meet opening January 2019, so our typical process, I mean, so for Kingwood, there is a lot of, a lot, $19 million worth of specialty equipment, lab equipment, furniture, IT equipment, that we need to get purchased to reopen January of nineteen. Typically, our process for doing purchases is we go out for bid on those items, and we receive those bids in, um, and evaluation is done of quality and cost, and then what we bring to the board for approval for those items over $100,000 is a request to authorize us to negotiate and execute a contract with a particular vendor to purchase that item, so it goes by item. This does add about two months to the entire process, so what we are doing here is we are putting together the list of everything that needs to be purchased. We have not yet gone out and gotten all of these bids, but what we are doing is asking here for authorization to spend up to $19 million total, and to give the chancellor authority to execute individual contracts that'll be above $100,000, but not above a million. That way, as we get bids in, we can just immediately go and execute that contract and complete the purchase.
So this is similar to, somewhat to the authority we had before when, for emergency purchases, but everything would still co- well, if it's over a million, it would have to come back here, period. If it's, uh, over a hundred, in between that, up to a million, we would move ahead with it. We would still notify you, like we would, that we've done this, then we would come back at the next board meeting and ratify. So the problem that we have right now, or the challenge, is we're not meeting in July, so some of the options, that's, that's under the best-case scenario, is that we would have to have a couple of special meetings to approve our expenditures if we don't do something. I don't think, the way things are going, that if we don't have this authority to move ahead, that we're going to be able to get everything, um, ready for Kingwood by January. We have to wait for the board meeting, so that's what we're asking for. This is a, a one-time, this is not a permanent, um, uh, policy change. This is for Kingwood only, for this particular situation, so.
So I want to make sure I understand. Are you asking for authority to go outside our usual procurement process? To, for the purpose of purchasing these items for Kingwood? Up to $19 million? That's a lot.
We are not changing the procurement process, we're still gonna, it's still gonna be the competitive processes of getting bids. What we are changing is sort of the order of when we come to the board. Typically, we receive the bids, and then we come to the board for approval with a specific bid and vendor to purchase the equipment from. Um, so typically, we come at the end of a competitive procurement process. We are still doing a competitive procurement process, I absolutely want to make sure, because that's how I get FEMA reimbursement, hopefully. Um, but really, now we're just coming to the board on the front end instead. That way, once those competitive bids are in, and we see where the best value bid is, instead of at that point, coming to the board, we already have approval to then just take the contract to the chancellor and complete the purchase.
Let's do this, let's do this first, though. We're evaluating a Robert Roosevelt, let's get a motion, you know, on that particular item, and in a second, then we'll come back with questions and comments. Can we have a motion to adopt, uh, second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, that we adopt item nineteen, uh, ready for questions or comments? So Linda, you, did you finish with your?
I finished my comment.
Okay, thank you.
This $19 million is not just one, this is going to be a number of, of.
Correct.
Bid procurement processes.
Oh, yes, yes.
Not to exceed that maximum.
Yeah, and, um, the bid tabs that are typically included when we bring the individual items to the board for approval, we can definitely still provide all of this to the board for information to show that we have followed the same processes that we would normally.
So give them some examples of what we're talking about here.
Um, I mean, really, the, one of the big ones is going to be furniture. I mean, we're gonna have, hopefully, at the June board, you're gonna see, uh, requests to approve the construction, and that's gonna be obviously very important, that we have the construction firm come in and rebuild everything, but then you're gonna have empty rooms. We're gonna need desks, we're gonna need tables and chairs for the classrooms, um, it's a lot of, of purchases. And, uh, like I said, we don't believe any single purchase exceeds a million dollars, so you are talking about a lot of, you know, two, $300,000 purchases.
We're basically refurbishing six buildings over there.
Yes.
I mean, it, it's a, it's like a startup of another.
Are you refurnish- refurnishing the second and third floor of buildings, or just?
No, just the bottom floor.
Yeah. Just the bottom floor, um, but then IT equipment as well, a lot, you know, a lot of the computers, um, that need to be replaced, yeah.
Are, are any of those, and, already in the, in the budget for recycle?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I said, are any, any of that IT equipment, is that, any of that in, already in the budget for recycle?
I mean, there is the, whatever that typical budget is, but this is to replace all the computers that were lost.
But weren't some of them to be replaced anyway in this cycle?
Yeah, linked, linked.
So, when we, when we reviewed all the IT equipment that's been there, there are some that we have phased out of that because they are the end of life cycles, they can be replaced normally. Those were pulled out there, we also pulled a couple of items out of the, given process, because we already had the luck to take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Who, who's on the bidder selection list? Who's, what, what's the team, who's that team that make the selection on the, on the bids or whatever?
It's gonna be a lot of them, we're making a lot of individual purchases.
You and who else will be making that decision?
Uh, so it's, um, I don't sit, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna be sitting on any of these selection committees, um, and it's gonna be depending on what specifically is being purchased. So, like I said, for each one of these items, I can, will definitely come back with a full report on all of the documentation that you would normally see in a, in, uh, an agenda item.
So we would not be coming back to the board for ratification, we would move ahead. The only thing we'd be coming back to the board, or coming to the board with, is a million dollars or more. All those individual items, we want to move ahead so that we can get the college reopened.
Yes.
Yeah, so, the bid process is gonna be the same, we're still gonna be getting the emails about blacklist, or, right, so we're not gonna comment. Now, we've proposed something similar, um, in terms of the spending, the coming back for the reauthorization that I didn't support at the time, but this seems to make sense, in that it's a one-time authorization and not an indefinite authorization. The funds are not fungible, they have to remain within Kingwood. And this $19 million escalates almost exponentially if we go past the January deadline, because we start hemorrhaging students at that point, and, which means our revenue stream gets hit. Not only that, we have a negative impact on the students, students who would have matriculated won't, and students who we have a tough time retaining drop out.
I think that part's a key, key point, I think you mentioned that we want to open in November, in, uh, January of 2019.
January of nineteen.
That, that's what I, well, that's what I said. January, 2019.
You said it.
Did I say it that time?
Yeah, you picked it up the first time, I got it the first time.
And a delay because of the process could cause the building not to be ready in time. So would that would have resulted in us having to wait until the next following semester?
Right.
To open, it's kind of what Kyle said, okay?
We're potentially talking about several million dollars lost revenue here. That's what's been happening with the declines in Kingwood, so.
But that assumes that we don't otherwise approve things in time. Did I hear you say something about the other option is some special board meetings?
Yes, yes, yes.
So that's the, the alternative to granting this $19 million of authority?
Any other comments, questions? If not, those in favor, vote by the usual sign?
Aye.
Opposition?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, it's two op- two opposed, and. Five, six, five. Did I get it right? One, two, three, four, five, two. Motion, motion pass. Okay. Jennifer, I think you're still on with the financial report, financial report.
Okay, so in our financial report, what you have presented in your book are the financial statements for the month ending March 31st, 2018, uh, and first, you'll see in the first chart, our revenues, which is really, uh, what it's continued to be since the spring, is 79.4% of revenues, which you can see is below, um, last year. Um, it's sort of in line with prior years, and this is keeping in mind, right, that we did see the drop in spring enrollment. In page two, you see the actual expenditures as a percent of budget, that is also continuing to trend below prior years at 51.2% at this point in the year. Page three of the financial report really is good news at this point, um, although I don't like to rest on it quite yet. Our forecast currently has us ending the year at 16.4%, so that is definitely very positive. Our goal is to end at 16%, um, but this month in particular, we are closing April's books right now. We're gonna do a very thorough scrub to make sure that we are confident that we are gonna end at at least the 16% was the goal set in the budget. Um, from there, I really want to jump to some of the Harvey expenditures, page five is the report for Fund 35. That's where you can see so far, what we have actually spent is $13 million. Um, and 10 of that has been at Kingwood.
So Fund 35 is our hurricane.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Harvey Fund. And then on page six is the balance sheet for the Hurricane Harvey Fund. Uh, the main point I want to make here is we have spent $13 million. We received a little over $10 million so far in insurance proceeds, so you can see that cash and cash equivalents is negative $2 million. Accounting-wise, this is allowed in a fu- in a Fund 35 fund. What this does effectively mean, just so we are aware, is that we are effectively borrowing from ourselves out of the cash reserve. Um, I mean, this is one of the reasons we want to continue to maintain a strong cash reserve. And then at the end of the day, we do have to make sure, I mean, it can be sometimes still, but at the end of the day, this fund, we will have to balance out to zero. So that's where, as you approve the board agenda items for Harvey-related costs, the fiscal impact statement says that first, this fund gets paid for by insurance proceeds, second, by FEMA reimbursements, and then third, once we see what falls out from there, is where we will ultimately have to reimburse this fund, either from the bond funds for capital items that we can fund through the bond authorization, and then anything remaining would have to come from the reserve, that's 16% reserve. So I did want to note that.
What's the latest on, on FEMA?
Yeah, that's where I'm pulling up next.
Sorry, okay, go ahead.
So on FEMA, we continue to do our part in giving them loads of paperwork that they require, which means we have submitted now project worksheets for $36.2 million, um, which is in various stages of being reviewed. So they review them, they come back and ask questions, we have to then revise some of the paperwork that's been submitted. So we have $36.2 million worth of project worksheets under review by FEMA, so that is at, um, so right now, right, the 39 million of estimated costs that I reported last month, a lot of this is still built on estimates, so that number's gonna continue to sort of fluctuate as we refine that number. So right now, it's actually come down a bit to 37 million. Um, so we're showing $37 million worth of estimated costs total, and 36 million is what has been submitted documentation to FEMA so far. So we've submitted 97% of our estimated costs. Now, what happens is, as we actually realize those costs, right, a lot of this is still estimates. We just talked about this $19 million that we still have to go out and get bids for, so a lot of this is still estimates. $13 million is the amount that we've actually spent. So, uh, we have submitted 97% of what the estimated total cost is that's eligible for FEMA reimbursement. Um, and so we're continuing to do our part and be responsive as FEMA does the reviews and asks questions, and from there, we wait.
In general, what kind of questions do they ask?
It's usually very detailed questions, they're reviewing invoices, um, to make sure that everything included in invoices are eligible for reimbursement, and then we have to submit, um, projects, so, because we have to submit the details of what we're building back, because if we, uh, I mean, if we build back exact like-for-like, then that's generally easier, but if we make modifications, which in some instances, it makes sense for us to do so, for example, we already know we want to move the server room from the first floor to the second floor, um, so things like that make a lot of sense. But now there are things where we're not building back precisely as it was, so we have to talk through those differences with FEMA. Um, and just so as they get the documentation, it's, we have a team of people working through this, including consultants, helping us do this.
And, and if I remember what chancellor said, we're doing some refurbishing to the buildings that we would have been coming up soon anyway?
Well, we have the healthcare building is being up.
Yeah, we didn't have too much scheduled.
But that's it for Kingwood.
Uh, I'm not sure what I said, but what I, what I would have said was, we're basically remodeling the parts of Kingwood that were flooded, so when it's through, they're going to have a nice, I mean, it's like remodeling, I mean, it's the same thing as remodeling your house after a flood, so that's what's happening right there. We didn't have anything outside of the, we didn't have any buildings scheduled for, or one building scheduled for?
I think we do, did have, uh, that we're gonna utilize is in phase three of the bond. So since we're building a new healthcare building as phase two of the bond, phase three did have some renovation funds to come back and redo the spaces that was gonna move to the new building, or some of those spaces are what is flooded. So if we're building it back now, we don't necessar- we don't need to then go renovate them in phase three of the bond. So there is some capacity there, yes.
Any other questions?
Do you want to hit assessed value where you're here, a preliminary?
So assessed value, uh, right, so for Montgomery County Appraisal District, the certified estimate that we, we received from them is 9%, which is twen- uh, 25% of our total taxable value is Montgomery County. And then Harris County, which I'm very happy about, because they had previously been telling us to expect flat, they came back at 3%. So right now, we're looking at a weighted average estimated growth in assessed values next fiscal year of something around 4%.
And that's much better than what we had anticipated in the budget, much better. I mean, we'd been prepared for zero at, in, uh, Harris County, because that's what we were told, so. That came in on Monday, and that makes a big difference in the way we are taking a look at our budgets for next year, so. We're gonna be in good shape, I think.
People have a chance to, to appeal. How much does the tax base decrease as a result of, of appeal, and you may not know, I was just wondering.
I don't know off the top of my head, but usually when we get the estimates from the appraisal districts, it's, um, it's what we call the estimated value with hea- estimated hearing loss. So usually, what we're utilizing is allowing some factor for estimated losses, uh, due to those protests. Yes.
That's good information, thank you.
Yeah, and I can get you the more specific of how much we typically lose.
Don't spend any time doing, doing that unless it's easy to get.
But the, the weighted average 4% is including some consideration already for that estimated loss.
That's, that's the only point I wanted to make, that's all you don't need to do next work, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we do that upfront. Yeah, yeah, we do that upfront.
Okay. All right. Any additional? You don't have any additional data on buildings and ground, other than the report, right? Okay. Okay, board members, any future suggested agenda items?
I think I asked Dr. Head this a couple of months ago. When was the last time we've done like an energy conservation for the sites?
Jennifer, energy conservation, when's the last time we did, when did we do the contract a year ago for, right about the time you arrived? Energy conservation and reviewed our energy cost? That was his question.
I have to look.
But, but you know, you asked that to be an agenda item.
I just, I want to know when we've done it.
We'll get you a report on that.
Okay, we'll put it in the next step, okay. Okay. If there are no other?
No.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Do we have any students left? Any students?
Yeah.
Can I ask you just a question, too? What, what do you guys think of this meeting? Give us your honest opinion.
For those of you who stayed awake.
Yes.
If nobody's staying, I'll call on someone.
Let us go home.
No.
Let us go home.
I just, I just want to say, I just want to say thank you for spending time with us. We welcome you to come back. We do this once a month, except when it's in July. So hopefully, you guys liked it.
Thank you. Meeting's over.